For your patience with that. And Arlen, we're ready for the select board, okay? Call the Brandon Select Board to meeting to order for March 28th. Thank you all for being here, whether in the room or by Zoom tonight. Thanks for all who are attending by Zoom. Just for the benefit of everyone, the town manager is attending by Zoom tonight. He's got a little health-related concern. So Dave, thank you for giving us the time tonight. We'll try not to. We're not going to ask the town manager to read his report, but he's here to answer questions and do his usual participation. So is there a motion regarding the Select Board agenda?
Motion to adopt it.
Motion and a second to adopt the agenda. Are there any changes needed? Anything to add? If not, all in favor of adopting the agenda as it was posted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Item two, approval of the March 14th minutes. Pleasure of the board.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes of March 14th. Any errors or omissions in the minutes as they were submitted? I just have a comment to make. This is not an error in the minutes at all. But I just want to clarify. Chief Kachajian was talking about the police dog and so forth, and different people who had donated. And he mentioned my name. And I did give him a check, but it wasn't for me. It was from the Masons. So I just wanted to clarify. Could that be added in this week's minutes? It was the Brandon Masons. Any other comments on the minutes? If not, all in favor of adopting the minutes as submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Item three is the town manager's report. Mr. Atherton submitted his report for March 28th, and it was in the board packet, which is published on the town's website. So it's publicly available. The Select Board also got paper copies or electronic copies through email. So rather than ask Mr. Atherton to go through it, Bill, did you want to highlight anything from your rec report since you're here?
I don't even remember when I put it out. But the, you know, I'll read it out. So Mom Prom is back. A ladies-only event for the first two hours. It's a very popular event. It's back after a two-year break. April 9th, 8 to 11 at the Brandon Town Hall. Rusty Deweze comes down from the mountain to bring his comedy to the Brandon Town Hall on April 16th at 7:00 p.m. Tickets are available online at brandonrec.com. Our summer program planning is heating up. On tap, theater camp with Jeff Hall, swimming lessons with Jake Jacobs, Joseph Sloman, Trail Blazers, and more. Stay tuned for our summer flyer.
Thanks, Mr. Moore. So are there any questions from the board or comments about the town manager's report or the recreation department news that were reported? Nope. Any questions from the public tonight for the town manager, whether folks in the room here or folks on Zoom? Okay, if not, we can always go back. Mr. Town Manager is always glad to answer questions while we're going through the various agenda items. And there's always public comment available before votes or after votes on all the agenda items. So don't be bashful. Item four is dedicated to public comment and participation for items not on the agenda. Start with the board. Anybody on the board have anything to bring up that didn't make the agenda? Anybody in the room tonight, anything to bring up that didn't make the agenda this week? Sue Gage.
So the school election, the revote, will happen on April 26th at the Brandon American Legion. And the polling times will be 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Okay, the school election will be April 26th at the Brandon American Legion, 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.
Yep.
Perfect.
Thank you.
And if folks want to vote, they need to either vote that day or request a vote, request a ballot from the town clerk's office in advance.
Correct. Or they can come in and vote early.
Or come and vote early.
So you can still vote early, but you have to request it. Nothing's coming in the mail.
Nothing's coming in the mail.
Nothing, yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Items that they'd like to bring before the board? Mr. Moore?
Piggybacking on to Sue Gage's comment there. There's going to be informational meeting. The school has an informational meeting the night before, and it will be virtual. This is a change from their meeting they had in February. This will be a virtual meeting by way of Zoom. That information will be available on rnsu.org.
Okay. Informational meeting by Zoom on April 25th. Further public comment? Items not on the agenda later? Folks by Zoom, anything to bring up at this time? Okay. Item five is a presentation of the preliminary design of the Union Street sidewalk reconstruction project. And I see on Zoom, we have Brian Bresland from Du Bois and King, who are the engineers who have done the design. Is there anyone in the room also here because of this or to speak on this? With some Union Street residents perhaps? Okay, excellent. Could I give the floor over to Brian Bresland? Would that be appropriate at this time? And Brian, you're on mute right now.
Very unmuted.
Okay, great, thank you.
Hello, can everyone hear me?
We can hear in the room, yep.
Okay. You should have in front of you some hard copies of Dave printed out. This, I would not characterize this meeting as a preliminary design. This meeting is a local concerns meeting. Because of the use of federal funds, at least two public meetings need to happen in order to, for use of the federal grant monies. And this meeting, why we're here, is just to get local concerns from Select Board, public, residents, on anything before we go ahead with our next step in the design process, which would be to come up with some alternatives. So with that, I would just like to state that what you're seeing in front of you on those hard copies, in red is the general area that we would be reconstructing the sidewalk. Basically, from Church Street and North River and Ave, continuing to the town center to the, the sidewalk would generally end where Segment Six sidewalk ended. Offset is going to vary. That would depend on which alternative is selected. So with that, I'm really here for comment from, again, public, Select Board, on anything that may range from, I prefer a grass strip between the curving and the sidewalk to allow for, if you had garbage services or signage or, you know, anything and anything that matters.
So Brian, when you said offset, that was the only thing I wasn't familiar with about this. Is that, is that what offset means? Does it mean how far back off the street the sidewalk is?
So in that hard copy I sent you,
Yep.
or that you have in front of you, you're in the center of the road. You're going to see an alignment with numbers. And, you know, it's ranging from Station Zero at the very beginning of the project to Station 11. And when I refer to offset, I mean, a position left and right of that alignment where the curving or sidewalk could begin. That has not been set in stone yet.
Okay, is that something that you've been working with the town manager and so forth about? Or is that something you need input for from us?
Well, next step is going to be, again, coming up with some alternatives and coming forward, the Select Board and the public again, and seeing what everyone has to say, you know, and trying to reach consensus. And that will be, that design will be advanced further.
Great. So it sounds like, it sounds like, as Brian mentioned, this is maybe better concerned, a better termed a local concerns meeting, which is great. So this is the time. Folks, we have folks here who are residents of Union Street, folks who are not, but who are interested, members of the board. The floor's open for comment about, comment about the project. Shirley.
Obviously, as some of you know, because I've spoken to you, I've been concerned for quite a while. And living on the west side of Union Street, which Ruth and I have agreed, I mean, it's really very broken up and hard to negotiate these days. I was concerned, I don't know when this would happen and how this affects our driveways. And it certainly looks like it's getting very close to my porch. So I don't know what that is.
What number on Union are you?
15.
Thanks.
Shirley Marklin.
So I'm not sure, folks, yeah.
Sorry, I'm trying to restate.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure if the folks on Zoom could hear or not the folks in the room. So Shirley Marklin's here. She has, she lives in a house on the first page of the project on the west side of the street. She had a couple of questions about when the project would be expected to be constructed, how it will affect driveways in the project area. And she had a specific concern regarding the proximity of her own porch to the, to the proposed project. You know, Brian, could you give us any light on the whens and the driveways and that kind of stuff?
Yes. In terms of when, B-Trans has provided guidance on beginning to end. They are pretty conservative in that regard. They say sometimes it could take four to five years from when the project was initiated until construction. That being said, you know, it's, there's, it would depend on a multitude of variables, such as rightway acquisitions and property owner willingness to work with us on this project, utility impacts, utility relocations. I would estimate a more realistic timeline for construction may be next year or the fall. With respect to the driveways, there will be, need to be some driveway regrading, most likely. And that is all going to depend on what's existing versus the grade at which we're putting back the proposed sidewalk across the driveway. And then in terms of the offset from the sidewalk to the porch, that can, that can, that can vary. More than likely, we will be reconstructing at approximately the existing sidewalk location. But we still need to come to that determination.
Thank you, Brian. So on the, on the design that we're looking at, it looks like in the little key, it says the dotted line or the dashed line is the existing sidewalk location. And then we have a red stripe on ours that's more or less in that same zone. Is the red stripe the proposed new sidewalk or is that not?
The dotted line you're referring to, is that, is that down in the bottom left of the page?
Right, that's what I was going off of, at the bottom left.
That is, that is a sign legend. We haven't, we have not put signs yet. I don't know if there's going to need to be any proposed traffic signs for this project. That being said, you need to, you can need a key on certain line styles as you're looking into plans. I can inform, let you know about that. But with respect to the red, that's just a generalized area, again, that we're going to be reconstructing, that red highlighted section, sections.
Okay, and so from, from Brian's answer, it sounded like there'll be right of ways that will need to get done the same way as Dave did all the right of ways for Segment Six and so forth. So each individual property owner is going to be contacted regarding the impact on their property, whether temporary or permanent. Is that accurate, Dave? Thumbs up, thumbs down?
I didn't think there were going to be any permanents, but I don't think we're there yet to figure that out. I think we have a lot of temporaries.
A lot of temporaries.
Doesn't that right, Brian?
I would tend to agree. That being said, well, we need to move this down, you know, progress this down a little bit then we can make a determination.
Does that satisfy your concerns?
That satisfied the two that I raised. One concern, the water pipe. I don't know what it's called, but the, the water outage.
Like the service, the curb stop?
Yes.
Where you're getting your town water?
Yeah. Which is relative. I know that when they were surveying this, there was, it was right after the large storm. So there was about a foot of snow. And I noticed by footprints, I don't think they identified where mine was. But that would be a concern is in terms of the water pipes. And also, the higher up on our side of Union Street, the grade is really wonky. It goes towards the road and it goes, the driveways are really bad in terms of their angles.
The driveways are steep coming off the sidewalks, going up to the houses on that side.
Yeah, I mean, they're steep and they're also dipping. So you pretty much have to go out in the road to avoid any ice on the sidewalk because it's, because of the angles. I don't know how that will be. There's not a lot of space there for leveling that. And it needs to be leveled, but I don't know how it would be done.
So again, Shirley's expressing concern about how ice might be mitigated. And there's some ice collecting on sidewalk as it is now on the driveways on the west side. And that the driveways on the west side meet the sidewalk at steep angles. And there's some gullies also, it sounds like. Like you're coming down and is there like a disjoint between the?
Not really. It's just that the sidewalk angles towards the street. And at the same time, some of there, because it's on a downhill, there are places where it's angling towards the street and going downhill at the same time. And it's a, they're both pretty significant angles, so.
Okay, so again, just to restate for the folks on Zoom. So she's talking about the sidewalk is angled toward the street. And in some places, it's also angled down the hill. So some of the angles, she says, are pretty significant on those, those grades.
Talking from experience.
Yeah, please.
Put in miles and miles of new sidewalks throughout different towns. And typically, there's always a way to regrade everything.
There's not a lot of space there.
There never typically is in a, call it a downtown area.
Okay.
There is ways, I mean, the sidewalks usually have to be within ADA compliance, which puts it at a certain pitch and angles. But the grading on the driveways may have to carry further back into the, into the driveways a little bit to, to make everything match and safer for everybody.
There is a significant marble barrier between the lawns and the sidewalk.
Some marble retaining walls?
Yeah, with very little room to move it, to level it. But that will be a problem.
It sounds like that when they get further along on their design, it would be a good time for you to be involved then too. So that way, as they get specific with your property, you can express your opinion to their design.
Actually, I mean, a lot of the things I'm expressing is just because I'm a walker and I walk on that sidewalk a lot. And it's more up the hill for my property that I have the concerns. I have concerns about the, how small my lawn is up front. But otherwise, it's more how to make that sidewalk safer than it is now.
That's certainly our goal as well.
So, guys, sorry, this is Dave Atherton. That's our, that's our goal, is to make that sidewalk safer. We've been doing five-foot wide sidewalks through Segment Six project and everything. Michael was right that, you know, we do have to follow a certain pitch for ADA compliance. I think one reason you're seeing a lot of ice buildup on that pre-existing sidewalk is you have a lot of cracks and crevices in it. And there's great places for the water to sit. So that makes a pretty, pretty great spot for water to freeze. So that's what we're looking at doing. The whole thing is to make that safer and ADA compliant.
Okay.
So thank you for raising those concerns at the beginning of this so that as they develop the plan, those can be in their minds. Other folks tonight with concerns about Union Street or questions? Dave, were you needing any board action or was this more or less for information? It's for information to help the project?
Yeah, this is just information. I mean, you know, it's already approved moving forward with it a while back, so.
Sure.
Yeah, when final plans come, I'll have to bring them for you guys to sign them. And that's really probably it.
Anyone else further comment on this? Okay, thank you for participating in that. Thanks for the helpful comments. Charlene, you've got the stuff down that people said instead of, instead of my rephrasings. So we'll go along, we have the certificate of highway mileage. And I think the only change, as I understand it, is that we declassified a portion of Steinberg Road this past season number, where the site does it in a hearing just a little bit under a half mile, it looks like, is no longer a Class Four, but is being added to legal trail. So it's a pleasure of the board on adoption of the certificate of highway mileage for this year. Motion, Mr. Coolidge, and a second for Mr. Wyman. Any questions or discussion? If not, all in favor of adopting the certificate of highway mileage with the one change, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. The ayes have it. Item seven, we received from Lynn DeMarey a suggestion to have an unsung heroes' day in Brandon. I'll just read it. It's a brief email. "I've been meaning to write for a while between Segment Six and COVID. Many people did great things for others. I'd like to suggest a weekend, perhaps in the late summer or autumn, where we celebrate our unsung heroes of Brandon. I'd suggest a Brandon resident can email the town with two names of people who went out of their way to help out. We'd have to limit it to two. They can say why they're nominating them or not. And we could have the reporter publish the names in alphabetical order. I can think of a few folks we could get to sing or perform at the gazebo. And we celebrate community in Brandon for all the best reasons and have some good food and drink at our restaurants and breweries and wander our shops. Thanks, Lynn DeMarey." So what's the pleasure of the board?
I think this is a great idea. I'm just going to figure out who's going to
Yeah, I had.
set up the organization of it.
I had a similar response, which is that I think the sentiment's all good. And I think that the board is uniquely ill-suited to organize it. So I had actually asked the town manager if he would reach out to our Recreation and Economic Development Department. And right at the table tonight is our Recreation and Economic Development Department head. Bill, do you have any thoughts about this idea?
I think it's a great idea. I think certainly a lot of, you know, live in an amazing community, wonderful people like yourselves that do all kinds of great things to make this the best community in the state. And I want to rub it in one more time, Rattley County. We're one of the only towns, if not the only town, that gained in population. I think it speaks to the way that we run and the water and the people here. So I'd be more than happy to get together with Colleen Wright, my partner in crime, to create some kind of event around this in late August or beginning of September. And yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Would you reach out to Lynn DeMarey and see how, you know, the implementation of her idea kind of develops?
Oh, she'll be involved. I mean, that's a great, that's a great thing about community volunteers is that once you go over that idea, you gotta be at least on for the first two years. So if she's on the committee for two years, anyways, she doesn't know.
So is that the consensus of the board to move ahead with Bill and Colleen in the lead on this?
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you, Bill, for being willing. Thank you, Lynn, for the suggestion. Thanks to everybody who offers suggestions for the board to consider. Here's another. Sue Gage is here. Consider establishment of a Brandon community fund. We don't have any actual paperwork on this. But Sue, do you want to maybe introduce the concept to the board?
Yeah, it's an idea. So we, as you know, we had some money in CDs earning a whopping 0.4% an eight-month CD. That was about as high as it got. That CD, and then I put as much money as, I kept pushing more money on it to try and make a little interest. That came due in mid-March. And I started shopping around CDs and there's just nothing out there. And except if you go to a really big bank, you know. And I thought, oh, God, I hate to put our money, tie our money up with this big bank and line some big banker's pocket. It'd be really nice if we could take this money and use it in the community somehow. And I sort of sent something to Seth and Dave. And Seth said, you mean like a revolving loan fund, kind of, for homeowners? And I said, exactly. So I kind of got thinking about that. And I reached out to a banker in the area. And she got really excited. And she said, there's a whole area that's not being served. I mean, we've got a lot of programs that are helping the very, you know, people who are really struggling. There's sort of this middle group. And housing is outrageous right now. It's really hard for a regular homeowner to buy a house right now. I mean, I just was thinking it would be kind of neat if we could take some ARPA funds, some of our own funds, and put them in a fund that would be like a Brandon community fund. It would help Brandon homeowners, just Brandon homeowners.
And the other part that you described when you were telling me a moment ago is that the bank would actually service this?
Yes.
So the bank would check out borrowers' credentials and make sure that people were appropriately
Right.
able to pay. And then who would set the interest rate?
Well, I think that's something that we would discuss. I mean, again, this is like really fresh.
I think it's a great idea.
The nice thing about it is it keeps those funds in perpetuity, basically. I mean, you're, you know, there's always funds for people in Brandon to access. And it could be for a solar installation. It could be for, you know, rooftop solar or some, I mean, I know there's, you know, energy programs, but not everybody qualifies. And they could use some help with that, you know.
And it also seems like the best of both worlds because the town will be getting more than its miserably low bond, not bond, but CD rate, which is a point something, very small interest.
Point two right now, that's the going rate.
And our townspeople would have a lower interest rate than they would get through a regular loan through a bank.
Right.
So it would be a win-win.
Yeah.
Folks with some comment from the board or from the public?
Well, certainly coincidental with the interest of the Brandon Energy Committee that wants to try to develop a fund for weatherization and solar. And if we could, I thought we'd love to see something of this nature fostered and inclusive of those objectives.
Are we aware of any other communities that have something like this in place?
I'm not. I kind of, I mean, there's a Vermont Community Fund. And I kind of looked at that. Because I actually looked at that as a place to put our money and earn a little higher interest. And I was like, why don't we do our, why can't we just do our own community fund? And that's when I reached out to the banker. And I said, is this even, am I like dreaming here? And she was like, no, it's a fantastic idea. And she said, and there's a real hole there. She felt, she spoke to another fellow at the bank. And he said, there's some real need in certain areas. And they also, they do the Habitat for Humanity servicing of those loans as well. So they're kind of familiar with that.
What a wonderful perk to offer our residents in Brandon.
Do we know if it's authorized statutorily? Like, are we, are we in any gray areas? We don't know.
I don't know.
That's a gray area.
I think it clearly, it clearly needs some study. So I would, is there more public comment before any suggestion about where to go with this?
I would just quickly offer, a lot of the talk of homeowners, which as a homeowner, I'm all in favor of. It might be nice also to consider renters or people seeking to buy houses in Brandon who might rent currently in Brandon or something like that. So it's to promote ownership here, but also give renters a chance to participate.
Good comment.
Yes, so there'll be some, there's considerations about. So, there'll be some, there's considerations about...
Charlene, did you get the who's?
I know you.
Oh, good.
Thank you. So, I would suggest that we make a little working group of a couple of select board members and the town treasurer and the town manager, and probably the economic development officer, because this seems like an economic development, and there's at least an economic development angle to it, and have them do some research and come back to the board to see if there's something that can be recommended. Taking into consideration, you know, we have an established fund balance policy, what our reserve looks like, what we're calling upon it for, I just was reminded that Mr. Atherton did submit with his report this week, he did submit, a number of public works/infrastructure projects that would require some ARPA funding, you know? So, does that sound like, maybe put two select monads so that we don't have any open meeting troubles? Anybody care to serve or care to nominate someone to serve?
I'll volunteer.
Mike, excellent.
I'll volunteer.
Mike and Tim. All right. Is that cool? I think we should formalize that if we can, so do you want to nominate Mike and Tim to serve on this?
Sure.
Okay. You want to second that?
Sure.
All right. Is there any discussion to be had about Tim Giles and Mike Markowski serving on, serving as a working group with the town treasurer, the town manager, and the economic development officer to research the possibility of implementing a Brandon community fund?
Very well said.
Thank you. Public input before the vote? All right. All in favor of that motion to appoint Mr. Markowski and Mr. Giles? Say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. It's unanimous. Thank you, Sue.
Thank you.
Number nine is consider expansion of the Brandon Energy Committee. We have the chairman here, which is excellent, and this is kind of in conjunction with number 10 here. So, right now, Jim can correct me if I'm wrong, but right now, I think the Energy Committee is Jim Emerson, Jack Schneider, who's also here, thank you, Jack, Lowell Rasmussen, and Robert Black. Is that correct contingent right now? Okay. And are you right now up to five? Is that what the, Mr. Orchard finished his term?
Right.
And we said, "Thank you."
Yes.
Yep, so is that, but basically has five been the limit?
That's my understanding.
Okay. So, Jim had emailed me this week or last and talked about, you know, the need that they have for some more people power on the Energy Committee, as they consider different initiatives that they're looking at and trying to implement, and he said they could use up to 10, and I'm really, and he says there's interest, you know, and we have in the item 10 on the agenda, we have interest from two Brandon folks. One is confirmed to be a Brandon folks, is Jeff Halen living in Brandon?
I do.
Oh, it's Jeff Halen right here, okay, great.
I live about 100 yards that way, yeah.
Awesome, okay. There was no address on that. So, there's a couple of Brandon folks who are interested, which would give them six, and I said, you know, if Jim feels like they might use up to 10 people, this isn't, you know, one of those committees that need a limit to three or five or something like that.
Right.
You know, as long as you can kind of all manage working together as a group of 10. I would suggest that we authorize expansion of the Energy Committee to up to 10 people.
Sounds good.
Public input? Mr. Moore?
It's just a suggestion, it's not trying to scoop or anything like that, just from somebody who sits on a few committees, like, be careful with expansion. I mean, like, we have alternates, for instance, for our revolving loan fund committee, because you start running into some quorum issues, so if you get to 10, you gotta have, you gotta have your five, that's gonna be there, otherwise you can't do business. Just, you know, just as a side, like, just as a warning.
So, you, a quorum is consists of more than just active members, it has to be the total of possible numbers?
Yes. When you get to a board that size, it might be, it might be six, I think it's just the majority.
He's got a very good question before we go into side conversation. So, a quorum of a board, is it all the open, is it all the seats, or is it a quorum of the people filling seats?
I think it's the quorum of people filling seats. We have a 15-member board in the chamber, but we only have 13 on right now, so our quorum would be seven.
Filled seats.
And it'd be, it'd be quorum eight if we have our full 15-member boards. I think that's probably where they go. I'm not 100% sure.
I have my select board, so if you'll talk quietly amongst yourselves for a minute, I will just...
A board of civil authority can have just three people in a quorum, except for abatement meetings.
Jeff says he thinks that's right, too. He knows parliamentary procedure.
Okay.
And again, as somebody who's, I'm the chair of the Autocreek Communication Union District Meeting, and no fewer than three meetings this year, we've not been able to transact business because we did not have the requisite number of folks to do the business that we need to do for the month, and I mean, not that you got, yeah, just as a warning, it's just a link.
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Town Manager?
Bill Moore's correct on that, because we go through that with regional planning every now and then, too, so you might not be able to take any action on everything if you have a larger board and less people shovel.
Is that a risk you're willing to take?
Well, I would go as, let's request we expand to seven now, and if we, we'll come back for another request as we have more demand.
Okay. Could you create three alternates because they're not voting unless they're needed? I'm philosophically opposed to alternatives.
I already have, she's not quite ready.
Yeah, and it's easy for him to come back.
They could vote for it, but I'm not.
It's easy for him to come back and ask for more another time, so I think seven's a great solution.
Seven good for now, but you can meet committee members. Is there a motion, or are you going to make a motion?
I make a motion that we expand the Energy Committee to seven.
Any further discussion, public comment, expanding the Brandon Energy Committee to seven? If not, all in favor of expanding the Energy Committee to seven, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Yes? You're opposed? Yeah. Four to one. Mr. Coolidge opposed?
They should stay at five, because sometimes they'll have a hard time with the quorum, and they don't all of a sudden the spots fill, so if they had other, if they had 15 people that wanted, they can't bring them all in if they wanted to be on.
Very good. Noted. Charlene? Thank you. Any other comment following the vote? Okay, so that will pass four to one, though. And then, how about appointments to the Energy Committee for indefinite terms? Two people confirmed to be Brandon residents, Jeffrey S. Cohen and Jeff Halen. Thanks for being here tonight, Jeff Halen, nice to meet you. There's letters of interest here. What's the pleasure of the board on this?
Just a question on the indefinite. Don't we, what do we do on the planning commission?
They're definite. They're definite. They're certain lengths of time.
Huh?
They're certain lengths of time. I think we've kind of approached the Energy Committee as like a working group, more than, more than a commission, maybe.
Yep, okay, understood.
We can, we can set terms if you want to. I don't know that we need to. I think it's kind of an unnecessary complication for this group.
Well, then, I guess I'll go ahead and make the motion that we gratefully accept these two people who want to volunteer for our community.
One second.
Excellent. Motion and two seconds. Any discussion about appointing Jeffrey Cohen and Jeff Halen to the Energy Committee, which would make six, and that would still leave one open slot based on the action that the board just took? If not, ready to vote? All in favor of appointing Jeff Halen and Jeffrey Cohen to the Energy Committee for indefinite terms, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no?
All abstaining.
One abstention. Four and zero and one. Okay. Item 11, there's a warrant, and then a warrant, a separate warrant for the library grant. What's the pleasure of the board on those?
I'll make a motion to approve the March 28 warrant of $58,032.84. One second.
Motion on the first warrant, which is the general fund, $68,032.84. Any questions on any of the bills? If not, all in favor of approval of the warrant, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no? Any extensions? Item B, a library grant warrant.
I'll make the motion to approve the library grant warrant, $6,871.25.
One second.
Motion and a second. So, this is, Dave, I hate to make you talk, but I rarely, or actually, I could ask Sue, Sue's here.
Yeah, sorry.
It's a warrant, it has, it has a negative line, and I always get a little bit concerned. So...
Seth, I can answer that, or you can go on.
Oh, great, yeah.
It's because we're just the pass-through, they have to, they have to do the grant through us because of being a municipality, so we submit and get reimbursed, so...
So, have we...
I think this is the first invoice.
Oh, this is, I understand what you're saying, when you say invoice, so this is, this is the total of what the town has laid out already for this?
No, no, this is what's been spent, this is what's been spent so far with, this is a library grant through Community Development Block, and this is what's been expended so far, but we have to be the ones to submit because we are the grant administrator for this, so...
Wait, it's a CBGG grant.
Somebody's not coming out of our pocket.
Right.
We're just a pass-through.
But I don't understand why there's a negative 481 there.
So, I'm just trying to understand why. I get that we act as a pass-through for the library, I get what reimbursable grants mean, I'm just not sure what this like minus $481 line represents. What does that indicate?
I don't know.
It's like they got reimbursed for some of it already.
Well, we had a legal expenditure, so I don't know if that's paying us back for that.
Refund.
I don't have my phone, my phone.
Is this something we should ask Jackie, or is...
Is timeliness important? Yeah.
Jackie would know, yeah.
Dave, do you know, could we ask Jackie some stuff, or is this like really, is timeliness important on this?
I'm just trying to scroll down to where you are with that invoice.
It's the last page of the package.
Now, is this a question of what, why we have a warrant for it?
No, the question is why is there a negative 481?
I can't hear you, Tim. Talk to me.
So, the question is why the second line indicates a negative $481? I see she's got some memo lines, you know?
So, we probably have an invoice in there, because they used, they used legal counsel, we had to do, Connie had to do, I can't remember what it's called now, it was back a while ago, so we've already, we already paid for that, that could do with that 481 this fork that is coming back to us.
I think it is, yeah, I think it's a, and it just takes my money.
That would be my guess.
Okay, so Sue's kind of, it's ringing a bell to her, but that, that's, that's, okay. Sorry for that little side trip. Any further comment? If not, ready to vote? All in favor of approval of the warrant for the library grant as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say no? No abstentions? Okay, guys have it. Community announcements, suggestions for the good of the town? Anything else of that nature? Oh. We failed last time, and now it's been in the reporter, so there was an extended and nice article about Wayne Kingsley, who passed away and was our longtime tree warden, so I would, at this time, like to ask for a moment of silence in recognition of his public service to the town. Thank you. And I think his memorial service is the first week of April, I think it was the sixth, fourth, fourth or sixth, but we can consult the reporter because it was listed there. Thank you for that. Other announcements?
When will you have the discussion of ARPA fund use on the agenda?
I think it's going to be coming back. Mr. Atherton had some proposals, Sue's community fund might be part of, and that might be looking for some ARPA, so I think it'll be a fairly intermittent discussion for the next several months, would be my guess, weeks at least.
Okay, we'd like to bring back, apparently we can also discuss, or we'd like to revisit the idea of perhaps a solar project that would support the town and save taxpayers.
Yes, so a little further to not that specific thing, but to ARPA generally, and why we're talking about it again. The town recently was educated, and the League of Cities and Towns came to the position that the treasury's offer of a standard revenue loss figure is basically applicable to most Vermont municipalities. So, the way that that works is now, instead of ARPA being really segregated to broadband and wastewater and things like that, now it's more like general government. So, that's why we're starting the ARPA discussion, starting to reexamine the ARPA discussion. So, in other words, we had a good ARPA discussion over last summer, and some of the stuff that we disqualified during that discussion, because the specifics of ARPA were not, did not make those allowable expenses, this standard revenue loss figure does make them allowable ARPA expenditures, because they would be general government expenditures. So, I think it is, I think Dave has done that work with the infrastructure piece, you know, about certain projects he's identified, and the folks on the Energy Committee have some ideas, Sue has an idea, so, and we have obligated some ARPA money already by board votes, including some to the communication, or some, some to assist in a match for some broadband, separate broadband, dedicated broadband funding that the state has available, and then some for the new road pump station. So, beyond those two things, I think that there's, there's a need to have more discussion, and that's probably what's going to take a number of weeks. None of this needs to be obligated, even this calendar year. There's really, there's not the time pressure.
Yeah, and BLCT is encouraging us to be careful and methodical and not rush.
Oh, and we also obligated some on the water connection, so there's three things.
Do you know how much is not allocated?
I don't off the top of my head. Dave will easily be able to fire that number off tomorrow, kind of thing. Is it in your little report?
I couldn't hear what Jim was saying.
Sorry, Jim was asking if we had a number that's not yet been obligated from the ARPA money, and I did not have that number off the top of my head.
No, not off the top of my head.
Yeah, so it's not on the chart that Dave prepared with his identified infrastructure stuff, but I'm sure at the next board meeting, we could easily have that, we should have those figures, and we can have those figures so that we can discuss intelligently, and if you want those figures before the next board meeting, I'm sure that the town office, Steph, and, you know, Dave or Elaine or Jackie would be able to get those three figures from those three votes and take them off the ARPA top line.
And is there any directive on the ARPA funds that have been used to benefit the general public as fully as possible, or...
I think that's been the board's general way of looking at ARPA, is that we wanted it to benefit the largest number of people in Brandon for the longest time that we could, rather than being super-targeted.
Yeah.
And we ran into some limitations early on about that, but now it appears that those limitations are less.
Thank you.
So, it's still my preference that, my personal preference, that ARPA money benefit the broadest number of people in the town. That was a good little community discussion there, kind of unscheduled. Other topics before the board? Okay, if not, thank you all for attending. We're going to stick around and just sign... Okay. If not, thank you all for attending. We're gonna stick around and just sign the stack of liquor licenses, and we're adjourned. Is there a motion, Jim?
I'll go away then.
Go ahead, or
Just go ahead.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Not debatable. All in favor?